This is the Broke Ass Police Department Act. This act is meant to give approval to the law enforcement agencies to assist with funding by giving an additional source of income. Under this act, the police department will be permitted to sell properties that have been permanently seized after it has already been held for a minimum thirty days. Wait, sorry, I might have misread that. Under this act, the police department will be permitted to sell properties that have been permanently seized after it has been held for a minimum of thirty days. This act will require approval by the courts and allow the owner or those who allege to own to state their case on why it should not be permanently seized if they choose so. In order to be eligible to sell a property, the law enforcement agency must go through the following checklist. One, verify based on their records, the property has been permanently seized and that at least thirty days has passed since the seizure. Two, notify the courts as well as the original or alleged owner that the agency wishes to sell the vehicle. And three, get approval from the courts that the sale will be legal and recognized. Any revenue made from this will go directly to the agency that seized the property. No money shall go to the original or alleged owner unless the courts deem it reasonable. Was that better?
I don't think I heard you.
What happened?
I'm going through it a third time. Alright.
I'm kidding, I'm kidding, I'm kidding, I heard you.
Good God.
Clayton has a PowerPoint for everything. Please don't make him do things like this.
I, yeah, kinda do.
Uh, if nobody has any other input. Theo, did you have any input for it or?
No, I think it's a great idea, especially in times like now where the LSPD is, uh, the budget is becoming dangerously low to zero.
Did you say they're broke?
Yeah, hence the name.
Baby, we're more broke than the McFlurry machine, the McFlurry machine dude.
You know what?
Yeah, if you find that, it's just more responsibly.
Well, I mean, I do have a question about this act then.
What's up?
Um, Theo, would this fall under of setting a price that people pay to pull their stuff out of impound?
Yes, um, yes.
Okay. I take it you're gonna, y'all will discuss that?
Yeah, I'll figure all that out.
Okay.
How does voting work with someone gone?
Uh, just you denote them as absent?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
All in favor of assessing the Broke Ass Police Department Act, I, those against say nay.
Are we starting my end?
Yeah.
Uh, I?
Nay.
I?
I.
I am curious, Mr. Mervin as a new city council member, your thoughts on why you're voting nay?
Mainly because I don't like you.
Alright, fair enough.
You know, fair.
Alright. Dick.
No, his name's Mervin.
Well, no, I'm calling him dick from now on. You know, I was the one that fucking said that you'd be a good fit for this. I take that shit back.
I, I think he's a great fit.
Does he have a block? You double faced until, you know, you're happy in sunshine when something goes your way, but the moment that it doesn't go your way, you turn your back and you stab people.
I did nothing to you. What have I done to you?
You just called me a dick.
Yeah, because you just said you don't like me, so you're a dick.
And you're a wanker.
Well, alright.
So glad this is public.
Yes, it's passed. Mervin could go fuck himself.
Why don't you fucking watch me, mate?
Mervin!
You're right.
Watch your mouth.
Uh... Theo, you wanted to change a charge?
Uh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Uh, so, not really, well, wait, yeah, hold.
You have, you have two that you were proposing.
One is, uh... Fleeing on foot.
Uh...
Uh, yeah, so, oh yeah, so there's a change and then there was, um, two that I wanted to introduce because I don't think, did we ever vote on the possession of emergency personnel equipment things?
We were supposed to do that last week and you...
Okay, yeah, yeah. So, I'll start since that was first. Uh, there's two charges I want to introduce into the state. Uh, the first being possession of emergency personnel equipment, um, basically a felony charge at a thousand dollar fine and fifteen months in jail. The definition on that would be basically any, anybody possessing any equipment that belongs to emergency personnel. So that would be obviously police guns, tasers, nightsticks, pump wedges, any, any of the sorts. Basically be its own charge with the influx of officers being robbed recently. I think this would be a really good charge to introduce. Um, and then, I don't know, do you want me to, do you want to start a vote on that, discussion on that and then move to the next one or do you just want me to get both of them out right now?
Um, we can start a discussion on that one. I will now be opening the floor to the public to discuss the possession of emergency personnel equipment.
Before the council speaks? Yeah.
So, my, my question is just, why is charging possession of stolen property?
Uh, I mean, we, we have, we have been doing that, but it, that doesn't seem to be a deterrent for criminals. Uh, and that's why we would like the option to have a more severe charge for repeat offenders.
I, I wouldn't call it for repeat offenders with the way the definition is proposed. It's just a higher penalty for stealing from emergency personnel.
Right, right. But I mean, the, the option would be there for the officer to still charge them with receiving stolen property. Um, I mean, if, if they're not being a dick, I mean, that's kind of how we go with a lot of, a lot of things. Like if you're not a dick or you're like, this is your first time offender, we usually look at some lesser charges so that you're not getting absolutely fisted, getting arrested.
Oh.
Well, to me, it just seems like you're trying to put the police department on a pedestal right here.
How is, how is that?
Well, if, if you steal something from someone else, it's just, you get the normal charge. You steal something from a police department, then you fucking get a, you know, you get a fat charge.
Because, because police department equipment's, you know, a little bit more, let's say lethal and/or useful compared to, you know, what some people would have, like a, like a hammer. You know what I'm saying? If you get access to a taser, I mean, that could aid you in robbing people. Uh, I mean, that could help you aid in escape. I mean, there's a lot of things that could be used there.
I mean, yeah, but things like guns, they get stolen either way.
Right, and we have, we have our own charges for, I'm gonna let Ryder see if he wants to.
So, uh, this isn't, this isn't an unprecedented, uh, charge, uh, because we do have separate charges for assault, battery, attempted murder. We have a different branch solely for against a state employee. So this does follow suit with those. So it's not unprecedented, uh, at all.
What you got now, Mervy?
Oh.
Don't call me that.
Yeah, okay.
Does anybody else have any questions?
Um, I do for the, I'll, I'll speak on behalf of the citizens of the state. Um, if this, uh, new charge does go into effect, it needs to be iterated across both departments. Um, because I know how some officers are that if they're gonna charge him with that felony, uh, tonight hit him with the possession of an illegal firearm if they are found with a PD Glock on them. Because that would just be found as stacking.
Yeah, they wouldn't be able to do, uh, possession of an illegal firearm at the same time.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, but realistically, it's, it's better wording for almost the, an identical charge. Uh, the only difference is possession of emergency personnel equipment is five more months.
Yeah.
Does anybody else have any other input?
Well, yeah, with, uh, with, with the introduction of the Broke Police Department Act, you're gonna be selling uh, certain things to third parties. Now, isn't that technically going to be police department property and government property?
Uh, no, because, uh, that is not technically their property. It's stolen property, uh, that they are currently holding. It, it isn't...
So, yeah, it's in their possession.
Yeah, but you, you can possess something and not own it.
So it's possession of stolen property?
Renting.
So, the police department's gonna rent out, rent...
No, 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 no.
The definition states for possession of emergency personnel equipment, the definition we have right now currently, and obviously this can always change. Uh, but it says possessing an equipment that belongs to emergency personnel. So if you, if the PD is selling you something, it no longer belongs to them.
I just advise to specify stolen.
Yeah, I mean, that's a, that's a, that's a pretty easy fix.
Oh yeah, that's fair.
Um, anything else?
Then good for a vote.
All in favor of adding possession of emergency personnel equipment, felony a thousand dollars and fifteen months in jail into a new charge, say aye, those against say nay. Aye?
You're supposed to start with Ryder.
Oh, sorry.
With it being, uh, just clarifying the definition. So the definition being possessing any stolen equipment that belongs to emergency personnel, aye.
I mean, is it a one fits all charge or is it like per item?
Oh, we're doing this again.
Okay, so it's not ready to vote. Um, so, uh, it, it should be, it should be all because of the way it's worded because it's saying possessing any.
If so, then aye. Aye.
He did bring up a very good point.
Mervy, you said aye or nay?
He said aye.
Aye. That's been approved. Uh, so you also wanted to add in resisting, which is a misdemeanor, a five hundred dollar fine and five months in jail?
Correct, yes.
Uh, that is the act of resisting an officer from detaining slash arresting an individual.
Correct, uh, breaking cuffs, uh, anything of the sorts like that.
Okay.
Mostly for people that break cuffs, but yeah.
Gotcha. I will now open this up to the public. For their opinion. Anybody have any questions regarding that?
Is it also gonna fall under, uh, like if someone hits an officer, is that gonna be resisting or is that gonna be assault?
I mean, it could technically be like if you're trying to arrest somebody and you get tackled, this would, this charge would serve with that, but it's mostly gonna be for people that are actively breaking cuffs.
Okay, sounds good with me.
Yeah.
But how are you gonna differentiate this between failure to comply?
Yeah, I'm gonna be honest, I, I am probably gonna agree with, uh, Mervin here. I think this has a lot of potential to accidentally be stacked with other charges. Um, and I, I just don't think its definition works with, uh, several other charges we currently have.
Well, may I, uh, because I mean, I'm, I'm just kind of representing the citizens of the state here. Because I don't believe in charge stacking one bit. Anything during arrest such as like going for cuffs or anything, uh, why don't you just have resisting arrest and resisting arrest with violence?
Uh, can we change the, the name of it? Because resisting, I feel like can be interpreted many ways. I, I know their definition makes it a little bit more clear. But, uh, it, it makes it sound like it's going to be close to something like fleeing on foot or something like that. Uh, and I, I, I just don't like how it's worded just to, to keep it safe to not be accidentally stacked in any instance.
Um... Uh, Mervin and Ryder, you guys both make a really good point. I'm gonna throw out resisting. I don't want it anymore with failure, with failure to comply with, uh, with an order that, that we're gonna just start charging people with that.
Well, wouldn't failure to comply with the lawful order state that we are basically telling them not to hit us? Like if we say, hey, don't hit us, that's failure to comply?
What are you supposed to say to a criminal before you put them in handcuffs?
Going for cuffs?
Put your hands behind your back, yeah. If they're breaking cuffs, it's failure to comply.
Okay.
So just make sure you say, put your hands behind your back.
So we have to say, put your hand behind your back and going for cuffs?
Sure. One or the other. I mean, if they're breaking cuffs regardless, I mean, that's, that's, that's grounds for that.
Well then, can we clarify that in that definition?
Can I just say, saying either or would, would cover the legal basis of a command?
Yeah, yeah, I, yeah, I was about to say, I think just saying going for cuffs is enough to cover it.
No, 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 no. I'm saying can we clarify, breaking cuffs is failure to comply?
You don't need to clarify that. That's, that's very obviously a broken command.
Okay. You're gonna get a lot of backlash when someone gets hit with that charge.
I do, I have to agree with Paxton.
The courts will understand, especially if you, uh, explain your reasoning in court.
You might get a lot of backlash, but we're gonna not hear it, so... Enjoy that.
Wouldn't that just cause for more of the civilians yelling at officers then?
What?
Like what PJ said, it's gonna cause a lot of backlash.
I, I mean, it's literally, they, they, people could scream all the while. We're gonna get screamed at no matter what we do. So, I mean, it's not... This little definition isn't gonna, isn't gonna solve anything. The, if they decide they want to take it to court and they fight it, you know, that's why we have a court, they will decide whether or not that charge sticks or not. Very simple. That's why we have a court system.
Yeah, most likely, if, from what we've explained, if everything goes as said, they'll probably lose, still, still get the charge, so.
Yeah. Alright, so I'm dropping fleeing.
Sorry Clayton, I need to step on your toes.
Uh, I'm dropping the resisting. We'll just stick with the, um, not following a lawful order. Uh, so the final one that I had then is I just wanted a definition change. Uh, basically, and changing one of our misdemeanor charges, fleeing on foot, uh, I just wanted to change it to fleeing and eluding. Um, and pretty much, uh, everything with it will stay the same. It's gonna stay the same amount, fine, months. Uh, it'll just be a definition change to the act of fleeing and looting from the police.
Uh, can, can we get a better definition? I don't like that the name of it is in the definition.
Yeah, yeah. If you want to help me with that, Mr. Ryder, that'd be fantastic.
Well, I mean, I feel like that's too broad of a kind of, kind of thing, fleeing and eluding like...
It needs to be broad because we, given the, the people fleeing in wheelchairs, um, we feel it's necessary to change this. It needs to be a little bit more of a broader charge, given there's certain circumstances that wouldn't make sense for fleeing on foot.
Eh...
It's gotta be able to encapsulate the gray area.
Uh, would something like attempting to elude police on foot, uh, sound about right?
But what if they're not fleeing on foot and they're not fleeing in a vehicle?
I mean, I'd say edit the vehicle charge to specify motor vehicle.
What are they fleeing in then?
And then...
Wheelchair?
A wheelchair is a vehicle.
It is.
In what, in, in what universe?
Uh, a bike is a vehicle, uh, anything...
We're putting, we're putting, we're putting points on licenses for running in a wheelchair?
Uh, technically, yes.
Oh, alright.
That, that makes no sense because you have to have a license to drive a vehicle. You don't have to have a license.
You don't need a license to drive a bike.
Wow.
That's basically saying you need a license to have a wheelchair.
Can I, can I open this to Judge Howie DeWitt to speak on this?
I bear fucking, I already giled them.
I have, I have no, 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 Clayton, you got it.
Uh, no, no, I, I, I feel like you're, you're more upstanding when it comes to the definition on this.
Go, 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 go.
It's still a, it's still a vehicle.
Why don't both the judges speak on this one?
Uh, I'm, I'm good. I have no say.
So, it's, it's the same as if it's a bike. A bike is still a vehicle. Uh, you're using it to, it, it's not your physical feet.
Well then, why don't you just make a whole new charge of fleeing with a non-motorized vehicle? Therefore, they want to get points on their license and that would encompass a bike, wheelchairs, anything that doesn't necessarily have an engine.
Or...
That's a good suggestion.
I mean, we could add wheelchair to fleeing on foot.
Or, hear me out, we just put fleeing and eluding so that way it encapsulates everything and just make this process a million times easier.
I just wanna say, what, what Mr. Ryder and I spoke about was that a wheelchair is an extension of your body, therefore your feet. Therefore, fleeing on foot still is covered when you're fleeing in a wheelchair and if somebody wants to fight that in court, they will lose.
Alright.
I know one person that's probably gonna fight that in court.
It's literally one person and he will lose.
But there's also a second side to the issue. Cops are wanting to do the job by the book and if it doesn't state that, there's not like a, a broad statement of that in the charge. They're worried about charging them. Now, obviously, you know, we could set that precedent, but...
Uh, the issue is if we get too general with the charge, it could leave gaps. Uh, because as we were just discussing, uh, then people will start assuming a vehicle is not a bicycle and stuff like that.
Yeah, you can get a DUI for riding a bike drunk.
List up, you know, do we have to list out every type of vehicle possible? Do we have to say motorcycle, semi truck, car?
Motor vehicle, vehicle with a motor in it.
An RC car?
Yeah, RC car, yeah.
Okay, well then, let me pick your brain on this. The actual fleeing and eluding with a vehicle charge states the act of driving away in a vehicle. Do you drive a wheelchair? Do you drive?
Yeah.
Well, it would be operating.
Y'all are all on meth.
If, if, if like...
You operate.
It would be operating.
But it states driving.
Technically, yeah, you operate it.
So then that's just a, that is the description changer.
Yeah, you operate a bike, yes.
Jesus Christ.
Are you confused?
I...
Why did you do this to us, Theo?
Uh, it's just, uh, it's just, I thought a very simple, very easy suggestion out there and this went down a whole different path.
There's, there's a reason when Vivian Flur brought this up to the courts months ago, it went nowhere because it just didn't make any sense.
Right.
And it still doesn't make any sense.
Well, that's your own personal opinion, Mr. Dewitt. Um, it's us as a council to decide whether or not we want to pass it into law.
Right, but I think my fellow colleague is still on my side with this one.
That's right, yeah, he can vote nay. That's fine. Uh, if nobody else has got anything else to say about it, we can take it to a vote.
I will now be calling this to a vote. All in favor of changing the definition of this charge, say aye, those against say nay?
Well, we didn't come up with the definition.
Are we keeping the definition?
Well, well, no, we, we proposed changing fleeing on foot to fleeing and eluding and the definition was up in the air because
Kill me.
So we're just changing the name?
Fleeing and eluding, uh, is, is not a good definition and is frankly even more ambiguous than the current one.
So yes or no?
Uh, nay.
Aye. I wanna see how funny this is gonna be when it blows up on the basis.
Oh my god. Aye.
Aye.
Fox say.
Well?
That's been approved.
Now you giggling over there, Theo? Law's funny, huh?
Well, couldn't you just change the definition as well if we're changing the name?
They already, they already voted. They already voted. It's passed. It's inconcrete.
Uh, that's it for me.
Okay. Uh, I received an email. And Clayton and Theo and Mervin, I don't know if you guys received that same email?
Yeah, I see.
Yeah, I do.
Um, Alex Servino?
Yep.
Uh, he's an owner of a private security company. Uh, they are an entity of group six security. Their primary focus is corporate and private security solutions within the state of Los Santos. Um, recently, they were given the approval to purchase non-lethal weapons from the LSPD. I met with the owner yesterday after Easton Hawker's funeral. Um, he would like to inquire on purchasing security, um, licensed security vehicles. For the cut for his company as well as picking up contracts from the city itself. He believes by doing this, it would lighten the work for the LSPD and the BCSO. Basically, he said, we could lighten the load with, lighten the workload of the LSPD and BCSO providing security in public areas that would benefit from constant, from a constant, I, um... A prime, a primary example is the incident that happened at... His primary example is the hospital with everything that happened last week. I did invite him here, but he wasn't able to come, so...
Must not be that important to him.
I don't know if you guys have any takes on that?
I think it's a great idea. I think, I think businesses and civilians should be able to hire security. Um, obviously, the PD doesn't have, you know, the sheriff's office and the LSPD don't have eyes in, at every corner, at every time, so I think having the option for people to acquire security is, uh, is definitely a plus for the city.
But my biggest concern is what kind of authority will they have?
So there will be armed security, so they won't, the same way that would be operating different, I wanna say, so how BCSO and the LSPD patrols around the entire city, the security company won't be doing that. They'll just be patrolling around areas that they have the contracts for. So like, let's say the hospital, for example. Um, we would have one or two security guards primarily just, uh, patrolling around hospital itself and not anywhere off the hospital property.
I, I, I think before we, you know, approve anything, I would like to see like a, a standard operating procedure from them of how they're gonna operate and what their jurisdiction is gonna be, what they're gonna be carrying, you know, what's gonna be their um, procedure for hiring people. I don't think it'd be a good idea to have felons be working for us.
Oh my god, there's a spider! I killed it!
I've just been attacked by the sheriff.
I killed the spider. It was a tarantula. He was going for you.
My hero. Um, but I, I, I would like to see some of that in writing before we do any type of approving. I don't know how everybody else feels, but I think it's important to kind of understand and write out those guidelines so that, you know, there isn't a confusion of what they're able to do and what they're not able to do.
I agree.
I completely agree. Yeah.
You didn't get the one that was on your chest, you have.
I, I think we would also need to look into writing up some kind of legislation to make it clear potentially, uh, with sales of, uh, non-lethal items from LSPD or other government entities. Uh, because it, it could potentially, uh, leave some kind of hole that, uh, could have some massive consequences.
If you wanna start on that?
Well, no, they, they need a...
Well, I would, I would need to see what they propose as their SOPs first.
Yeah.
Well, what my concern is, who is gonna hold them to a standard and, you know, ensure that they aren't doing any sketchy shit?
Well, law enforcement, obviously.
Well, is, is there gonna be procedure for that? Uh, you know, are you gonna be actively monitoring their actions? Or are you just gonna let them loose and see what happens?
Well, it's just like, it's just like any other business in the state. You know, there's, uh, obviously if something arises that there needs to be an investigation into something, then we will, we will do that, but we can't just infringe on people's businesses like that.
Yeah, I would like to see, uh, more information like an SOP before we go any further with this, but I am open to the idea pending. Yeah, I would like to see, uh, more information, like an SOP before we go any further with this, but I am open to the idea pending, uh, what they write up.
So yeah, I, I, I don't think we really go to a vote until we, just, I would say, I can communicate to them or somebody else can. Uh, just let them know to write up, uh, just, it doesn't need to be like anything crazy, but we just need to see. How they're gonna operate, what it's gonna look like and what their, you know, hiring process is gonna be and we can kind of go from there.
Mm-hmm.
Next?
Uh, that's about it unless.
I have all my stuff.
I've got something I'd like to push forward with the council.
Uh, yeah, you could go first.
Oh, Mervin's business proposal.
Well, no, it's not that, it's something else.
Oh, okay.
Uh, I'd like to, uh, call a vote on Theodore Hayes unblocking my phone number.
Oh, I did on that.
That's funny. Aye. Aye.
It was a long time ago, okay? I just, I did, we had, we went through some rough times and, uh, yeah, um.
I think we should call it to a vote.
Aye.
I don't think that this is something.
Aye, no, no, it's definitely something we can hold out. Yeah, let's call it to a vote. Aye.
Public, public included, please.
Unblocking Mervin Ross's number, say aye, those against say nay.
Aye.
Nay!
Aye.
Aye.
Public, speak.
Nay.
Aye.
Nay.
Nay.
God damn it.
Aye.
We don't know how to unblock numbers.
Damn, that sucks.
Anybody know how to do this?
What was it you said to me earlier, Theo? Uh, sucks to suck.
Fuck you, Howie. I got it. Pretty good. I got it. Unblocked. There, fine.
Call him, make sure it works.
No, you don't have to do that.
No, please do.
Call him.
Call him.
You've earned that right, Mr. Roth.
Um, back to the past subject, do we also wanna make sure that it lines up with the Moxley Act?
Uh, yep, of course, uh, if they write up SOPs, it needs to fall.
Uh, did we open up to the public gallery? They wanna bring up any, oh wait, no, uh, Clayton's got his things.
Uh, yep, yep. Uh, so I have a bunch of, uh, suggested definition changes or well, updates. Uh.
That's by PowerPoint.
Yep, PowerPoint time. Uh, so first up, we got, uh, the charge of careless driving. This is, uh, number sixty-nine. Uh, the definition is driving with a careless manner and disregarding traffic laws. Um, I think this one is the definition of stacking, uh, and probably is too vague and doesn't really feel like it could go anywhere. Cause if, uh, we're talking careless manner, we could be talking about reckless driving, we could be talking about stoplight slash sign and, uh, violation. Failure to yield right of way. It's just very ambiguous. So I am proposing we remove that charge.
Which charge was it?
Uh, careless driving. Uh, number sixty-nine, uh, driving with a careless manner and disregarding, uh, traffic laws. Let me hear, give me one second.
Um. Yeah, I don't disagree.
Wow, but she just wanted more specified charges.
You wanna have that removed, Clayton?
Uh, yes.
Okay. I will now be opening this up to the public. Does anybody have any suggestions on this?
Nope, sounds great.
I barely heard it. What was the charge in question?
Um, we're focusing on getting of careless driving.
Uh, it just feels like it's stacking too many other charges potentially, and it seems like no instances would, you would actually charge, get charged with that without getting something else.
Yeah, by definition, wouldn't that just be reckless driving and isn't that another charge?
Uh, it, it could be reckless charging or, or fuck, reckless driving, sorry. Yeah, long day already for me.
Yeah, I agree with removing them.
Oh boy.
All in favor?
There's a star club happening.
Uh-oh. Um.
Is there? I'm, I'm not getting any notifications.
No, shots fired near the areas, it's probably. You two wanna go to that and I'll stay here.
I will now be calling it to a vote. All in favor of getting rid of the charge careless driving, which is driving in a careless manner and disregarding traffic laws, aye, those against say nay?
Aye.
Well, considering I drove si- uh, sixty over the speed limit to get here, I'm gonna go and say nay.
Oh.
That, that, that would be. That would probably be felony speeding.
Oh.
Aye.
Yeah, that, that's, that's what I'm saying.
Aye. The charge is now removed. Uh, Clayton, is there another one you want to do?
Uh, yeah. Uh. So next one is updating the, uh, definition for assault, uh, from intentionally or recklessly causing bodily harm to another person to the. The threat or perceived danger of violence to cause injury or unwanted contact to another person.
Number is that?
Uh, seven.
Holy shit, Clayton, did you?
You just looked?
Oh my god.
You've never looked?
Did you put this together?
Yes!
Oh my god, baby.
I worked one night with him.
Fuck is happening?
And I lost my mind.
He's very detailed, I like it.
Wait, are all the ones that are red needing to be changed?
Uh.
Removed.
Red and yellow?
No, those, uh, a lot of those are, uh, just me doing note taking, uh, so, uh, just kind of follow along. No, no, no. So, uh, the only ones we've gone through is that top section. We're now into the crimes against a person.
Right, right, but the ones that are red. The ones that are red are the ones we're.
No, 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 we're not getting rid of, uh, see, uh, anything that is highlighted, uh, probably has a change. Anything with.
Oh, Jesus Christ.
The update suggestion and notes column.
We're gonna be here all fucking night.
May I make some suggestion?
Yes.
Cool. Uh, my suggestion would be to, for the council to read over, uh, Clayton's proposed changes and then make a, uh, summary vote.
You know, fair.
So probably take like, what, five, five minutes, read over everything, make sure everyone's all on board.
It's gonna take Mervin ten.
Yeah.
I'm not paying attention, someone's up a name, what?
Uh, please let me know if you have any questions.
Clayton, wanna get rid of it? Wanna change it?
Uh, if you, if you look under, uh, update suggestion, column D, uh, you'll see my thoughts.
Okay.
Yeah, but how is everyone else gonna see it?
Uh, we're, we're gonna give a summary.
But I feel like the public should get the, the, the full stuff that we're getting as well.
I'll go through it one by one as we're ready to, to.
All right, I'm, I'm just saying they should be as informal as we are when, when they hear about this decision that we're, that we're gonna be making, you know?
I, I have a feeling a lot of the people in public are looking at it somehow already.
That is a fair enough assumption, yeah.
I, I have a feeling.
Uh, I have a quick question for the council.
Uh, yes?
Um, because I have a BCSO meeting in an hour. Um, is budget being discussed at all today or is that next week?
Be discussed with the next mayor.
Okay, thank god, I'm getting the fuck out of here. Eric, let's go.
Jesus Christ.
Wow, he just snapped his finger and said Eric chop chop.
Well, you know, he's my boy.
Clearly.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have an idea about changing it. Uh, is there another charge you wanted to change or give it of, Clayton?
Uh, ju- the entire list.
Huh?
Uh, if you, if you look at everything.
Yeah, this looks good. I'm good.
Uh, with everything?
Uh, yeah.
Uh, uh, do we wanna do like, uh, three fifty for driving while impaired instead of five hundred, just so there's a slight difference as well?
Yeah.
I mean, I'd say, uh, bump the charge in the months. I, I, I just say bump the charge of driving under the influence rather than lower the other one.
Okay. Uh, do we wanna make it a felony for driving under the influence or a misdemeanor?
Just a felony, that's fine. I mean, I'd go with felony, cause I mean, you're driving while drunk, I'd say that's a felony.
Alright, felony it is.
Alright, uh. Then. Uh, so that's, uh, so, uh, DWI is currently five hundred, ten months, ten points. Do we wanna, we, you said you wanna, you think we should lower the points for that one?
Yeah, I believe we should lower the points for, uh.
Do we wanna bring it down to like five and leave a DUI? Yeah, DUI at ten still?
Yeah, five, leave DUI.
Oh, but you could analyze it.
Yeah. Then, uh, charge wise for the DUI, do we wanna make it like seven fifty? And then fifteen months?
Sounds great.
Yeah, I'd, I'd go with eight. But my main concern about this is how, you know, what's, you know, what's gonna be the differentiating factor?
Uh, the, the BAC. Entirely.
So it can be within the legal limit, just?
Yeah, y- yeah, it, it's how it standard is. You can be within the legal limit and still get a DWI.
Yeah, that's how we do it. Ah, bazinga!
He's, he's not here.
Damn, that's embarrassing.
Yeah. I'm literally right here. What the fuck? You're fucking hiding from me. I, I redact my statement.
A little upset that I didn't get any praise for that from Mr. Do it over there, but that's.
I actually said congratulations, that was a good one.
Oh, thank you.
Oh, yeah, I, I, I was talking, uh, from when I was whispering earlier, I just forgot to speak up.
Yeah.
Hey you, Theo.
Way to go, Howie.
Is that all of them?
Uh, that should be, uh, yeah, that should be everything. I'll be double check. Yeah, I think that's everything.
Okay.
Coercion.
All in favor of approving everything that was just discussed? Say aye, those against say nay?
Aye.
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 Aye, approved. Is there anything else we need to talk about? Going once.
I mean, we've got my thing, but I don't know whether we need a meeting about that first, me and you.
Deal.
Right.
Would you like to go up to the podium and talk about that really quick?
I really don't really know what to talk about.
Your dealership.
Why would he need to go to the podium? He's on the council.
Yeah, I'd like, I don't know what substance put in there, like, I don't know what I'm trying to say, really. You know, I don't know how this process works, man.
You know, just give us the. I'm confused, is Mervin wanting to open up a dealership or a car dealership?
A car dealership.
Oh.
You know, give us the who, what, when, where.
What, uh, what do you have picked out?
Uh, I'll have to, I'll have to pull up what locations I'm looking at. Bear with me a moment. So I think I've got, uh, one in Vespucci. Uh, hang on, I was just gonna take a fucking while. Just gotta pull up all these fucking, uh, real estate advertisements and shit. You know, I'm just gonna say at least one in Vespucci, like. Two in, uh, Rockford, and then one somewhere else in the city, and then one in the county, which is Sandy Shores, I think. Those are the locations I'm looking at.
I like it. I, I guess there's a, there's a, there's a big conversation to be had about like, how are you gonna get these cars imported to sell? Like what that process is gonna be, um. You know, there's, I think there's a lot of, there's a lot of. Things to be decided on that, o- o- on that side of things, and I think that's probably gonna have to be something that's gonna be. Obviously talked about within the next couple of weeks, so. That might be something better to bring up for the next council if any of us, uh, obviously. You know, when that happens.
Right, right, right.
But I like it, I think it's a great idea.
Shall we call it to a vote?
I don't think we have enough for a vote.
I shall, I shall let's call it to a vote.
I, I don't think there's enough information.
Yeah, let's call it to a vote.
Do you have a location that you wanna? Pick out for it or no? Because.
Aye.
Yes, yes, I do.
What location is that?
Hey, hold on a minute.
I mean, we don't, we don't have numbers, we don't know what kind of cars he's selling. I mean, we don't know what his business model is.
Classic cars.
This is the first time I'm hearing of it, so I don't really know if I'm comfortable voting on this.
Listen, man, I got one down near Legion, another one in Vespucci, one in Rockford. And another one in, uh, I think Vespucci as well, kinda in the Davis area.
I am curious as to how you get your cars, by the way.
Uh, I buy them second hand.
Cause I do notice that you post them in the. Cars app.
Yeah, they're, they're secondhand and restored by, uh, by myself. So I'll track down barn finds and such.
How are you getting them?
Well, I mean, I, I, I'll purchase them from second hand, you know, I, you know, I'll purchase them from collectors. Uh, places like that, barn finds, I collect them and fix them up. But I notice anywhere, anywhere I can find them, I'll get them from and fix them up. So there's, I don't have a singular source, it's kind of dotted all over the place wherever I get any from.
That's kind of putting up a red flag for me.
What do you mean putting up a red, how is that putting up a red flag?
Because the state does not know if these cars have tampered bin numbers or not.
Why would they have tampered? What the fuck do you take me for?
I'm just saying.
Well, I, I mean, I'll tell you what, I, you know, I, I think the dealership's a really good idea, Mervin, um, but we just have to. We just really need to, we need, before we can vote on anything, we just need to know. You know, A, where it's gonna be. We are gonna need some paperwork from you as far as like what your business is gonna be called, you know. Uh, what your business model's gonna be. Uh, we need some documents on when you plan on starting it up. Uh, like your idea of things, uh, we've, you've gotta get it cleared by the feds. Um, so.
Uh, yeah, it's pre-clear by the feds.
Yeah, they, they pre-cleared it already.
Okay, cool. Um, so then, yeah, all we would need from you is obviously those documents. Uh, the location of where you're wanting it and, um. You know, just give us, give us, I guess, like a, a standard operating procedure, you know, and. You're gonna have to work with both the city, the feds. And anybody else that needs to be involved in where these cars are gonna be coming from. Uh, whether it's gonna continue with how you have been doing it, or if there needs to be a. Uh, you know, an import somewhere where we get these, these cars imported, so. Those are some things we have to figure out that I just don't think we're gonna be. those are some things we have to figure out, that I just don't think we're gonna be, we're gonna be able to figure out right now.
I mean, yeah, yeah, that's what the meeting's for after this. I was hoping to get the meeting done before this, but it just didn't happen, so.
That's fair, yeah.
Yeah, I've, I've got, I've got concepts of a plan.
Cool.
Alright.
Um, if there's not anything else that we need to discuss, or if you guys wanna bring up anything to.
Sorry, sorry, I thought you were Obama for a second.
Jesus Christ.
Is there anything that the public would like to bring up through the city council before I declare the meeting adjourned?
Yes!
Hi, Howie.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council, esteemed, uh, citizens. Uh, I would like to bring up the fact.
Hello.
Hi, Drew. I'd like to bring up the fact that, um, as of yesterday, the twenty-fourth was declared as Dr. Hawker's Day.
Huh? Yes.
A well-known criminal.
We had one charge, if I'm not mistaken?
Still a well-known criminal. Um.
With a misdemeanor.
While, okay, I'm not here to argue with you, Mayor, I'm here to present facts.
Who was also a doctor.
Okay, I'm here, I'm here to, I'm, uh, I'm here to present facts, not argue with you. Can I do that? Okay. So, uh, like I was saying, he, uh, had an entire day named after him, an alleged leader of a gang, um, an overall bad person. And, uh, we can't get the Reyes, uh, rights passed, that's all.
Let, let me speak on that. Uh, so, in order to change it, I would like precedence, so if his rights were.
You voted yes, I don't wanna hear free me.
I think it's, I think it's worth to mention, Mr. Dude, that you allow a massive felonious criminal as a lo- uh, lawyer in your courts, so what's the difference?
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry that we aren't like the police and, uh, don't put good public members who want to defend their fellow comrades to shame.
Listen, I'm gonna say.
I, I would like to state, I am the, uh, I am the head of the bar association, so I am in charge of hiring lawyers.
Yep, it's him.
I'm gonna say something. I, I'm gonna say, I want Howie Jewett and Theodore Hayes to either fight or make out. Alright, that's what I'm gonna leave it at.
Alright, let's go, do it.
Second option.
I do!
Second option.
Let's go.
No, we're.
Oh, no, we're making out in the back, thank you.
Okay, man.
Mervin, really?
I would do that every day of the week. I wanna take his chair.
Oh my gosh.
You look good up there, Mervin.
Thank you.
He's taking it too far, he's taking it too far! He's taking it too far! I don't want any of that, I don't need it, I don't want it, I don't need it, okay? He's, he's, he took all his clothes off and I don't want it, I, that's not what I signed up for.
Damn!
Anyways, meeting adjourned.
I don't know, he looks fully clothed to me.
Whatever he said, it was a lie, clearly.
That's disappointing. I am thoroughly disappointed.
Are we done here?
Yes, meeting adjourned.
Okay, I need to go wash my eyeballs out, thank you.
Elmer Dayton here from the, uh, IJJ News. I'm here out in front of the courthouse where the council meeting was just called adjourned. And I'm gonna be gi- I, I can't give you a summary on that, unfortunately, that, that council meeting was absolute useless. There was so much brought up that I don't even know what was brought up. Uh, I was literally almost falling asleep, guys. So y'all know what to do. Go out there and vote for a new mayor. Get this council out of here and we can get ourselves a council that is efficient and, uh, great for this city, because that one clearly ain't doing it. This has been Elmer Dayton. Thank you all for tuning in.